We know.
Call the meeting order and stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Full call, please.
All four members are present, on principle, Mr. Winter and Erin.
Motion for adoption of the agenda. In a second. Think we have an addendum for the consent agenda, some personnel issues. Any other additions, subtractions, corrections? Hearing none, all in favor, I.
I.
All opposed, same side. Moving on to item five, communications recognition, open form report.
There's nothing for committee to meet on tonight.
Moving on to item six, would be board committees.
Yeah, they were just kind of reporting on how the doing Beacon and ALC working together is working really well. They have new handbooks out for the Beacon and ALC were approved. All the policy updates and they're still doing student updated because they're still doing some testing and stuff on kids. That may come into the school, so when we get more numbers, then I'll get that back to you. So working on newer for worlds. And the transitioning went really well. Of course, there was incentive. Sock Center got football team got them out of sock, unpacked in this everything in a few hours. No, seven hours, whatever. And then Mowers football team had to beat them, so that really quickly got the stuff unloaded back into the building and no kind at all.
Great.
Yeah.
Stairs or something.
Next would be Sterns County collateral.
Not a lot of interesting things. This year's school year budget was 330,000. That could divvy up to all the districts in Sterns County. I don't know exactly how it's divided, but proportionately by student enrollment. Right? Yeah. Other thing was they shared that anybody who's using, was it mental services? Was it outside mental services or even in their schools? Everybody was fully staffed.
Yeah.
In Sterns County. So that was kind of a big deal that everybody has staff right now. And the only other thing they're looking for two, they have two open voting positions for outside organizations. So like Tri-Cab is an organization that belongs to this and Milestones is, who else is that's an outside? Anyway, they have reached out to the village in United Way to see if they wanted to become members. But if somebody did have something that you could think of that is mental health, outside agency related that they could have a position on the board. That's all.
PTA?
So with this, are you looking for, tell me what you want to hear. Do you want a summary of what was discussed?
Highlights.
My concerns and perspectives?
You have your kind of, you have the filter.
So they talked about membership. That was kind of a big thing. It appears that there's a minimum of 20 members to meet the threshold to have an organization. They fall short of that. So they end up either double accounting or triple accounting at home. I would personally love to see a more organic membership. The PTA is such a critical piece of the school component. So is it an issue of lack of proper communication? Is it, you know, needing a more focused enrollment strategy? Something like that. I did offer some suggestions. One of the things we talked about was maybe letters asking for actual help. If you think about the PTA overall, these are people that nurturing and caregiving their parents that want to be able to do something for the kids. So literally just asking for help, like we need your help, we would love your help. So strategies like that, it would be great to see a lot more members to the PTA that are actual organic members. They're struggling to get parents involved right now. It's more of a teacher enrollment. I talked about the pie fundraiser that they've done in the past. It doesn't look like they're going to be doing that going forward. It's a lot of work and not a lot of reward out of it. The fun run is the main focus, so they're going to put their primary energy into that. Currently raises enough to cover their expenses for the year. Might go a little short, it seems like, but there's enough in reserve. And they're planning the teacher appreciation and looking to the bus drivers and that again, which I think is a really great, really great focus. I think sometimes I think it overlooked. So there's the summary and concerns.
Thank you. Staff development.
The middle school, high schools, staff development met. They were working on planning the October 4th Wednesday training. They will be doing some MTSS training, which is the one the principals talked about, our lasting multi-tiered system supports. It will be doing some training, some ESL training. They're also having staff go to the peer review training that they're working on. And they have a new staff development plan that they will be presenting to the school.
So my first CD, I did watch it online. I gave up taking notes about a half an hour in because it was a lot. They talked a lot about the Read Act again, and I feel like we've kind of covered that for our schools. It seems like there's still a lot of questions about getting reimbursed when you already have the letters program. That they're going to ask Congress for more money. But I didn't feel like it was anything really new to this board. And then David Letterman, what's his name, read? He's some survey results that, were you able to get?
Yeah, I shared it out.
Oh, you did? Okay, I didn't see that. So they were interesting, so have a minute, take a look. They were just all different things, though. Yeah. Interesting what things are going on. That's kind of all I took out of it. I could have missed something, but I was trying to follow along as best I could.
You don't have any comments?
You know, that survey that Letterman does every year, if you look at it, the title of it's called, Where Are We Going and What We Will Find? Look, get a chance to look at it, just a, it's a barometer of where the state of Minnesota is at right now with the number of political and economic and social issues. That's basically what he does. If you take a look at it, I, I watched the whole presentation. I've got a pretty good feel for what he's trying to say and stuff, so if you have any questions, that'd be great answer for you.
Yeah, and you could kind of get a feel from him if you listen to him, but it was, it's still interesting data, so if you can look at it.
So it's an actual survey? Who's speaking of the survey? The Letterman company does a survey, any survey, when I can't remember the beginning, they said it 1,200 people. Statewide? Statewide.
Rural?
Statewide, yeah, everywhere and just to kind of get an overall feel of, this is a snapshot of where Minnesota is right now.
A lot of those curriculum, the question of how, well, it was overall and metro and parents. Those are the three things. So like definitely you could see that parents feel differently about some of the issues than the overall people in the state. But it's, yeah.
And you have to remember, it's a snapshot.
Right.
They did it before the SRO starts. And now that's been resolved, so parents might feel different now versus when they did. It was in early August.
Early August is what he said. So.
Why, was there a lot of frustration in the strategy? Oh, yes. Yeah, there was a lot of, and some of that may have impacted how people feel about the school or feel about the state, but that's been resolved now. It's always going to be resolved.
Interesting things. And because he's his own private company, he can just ask whatever he wants. And so some of them are, but yeah. Yeah, and somebody did ask how he gets a hold of people now because nobody had landlines. So it's a lot of messages and callbacks, and it's always an appointment. So they set up a portion of somebody's time to do this, so it's not like 80 or 5 minutes. No, I don't, but they set up the time. For a look, if you have time.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to administrative reports. Good evening, everybody. Busy week with homecoming. We've got a speaker tomorrow, Reggie Dabs. He'll be speaking with four different groups of students, two in the elementary and one in high school. I want to congratulate King Anthony Bear Shite and King Mary Ellery. We're going to be king and queen today. We've got homecoming dance on Saturday. Royalty is going to be visiting the Pearl Keels on Wednesday, so pretty much got something going on much every day. Jumping to NHS, NHS's theme this year is based on the Dory philosophy. And that's when life gets you down, you know what you gotta do? Just keep swimming. So, and they'll build that, that theme throughout, throughout the year as the year goes on, that model. We've got a meeting day coming up where school organizations, groups, teams have an opportunity to connect students or students interested in treating all things, joining something. That's, we do that three times a year. Juniors, we plan on having juniors attend what's called Epic, October 27th, an event that's designed for high school students. We're going to have our juniors go because that fits with our junior career day, job shadow and so on. And it's a really good jumpstart for them since it's early this year. Sawyer began her first round of senior student individual group, small group meetings. She started those today. She wants to, I think she mentioned, she does that three different occasions throughout the year. She's following and following. And I guess last thing, we just had a really, really great start to the year. Just a lot of positivity from kids, from staff, and I've really been happy with what I've seen so far. So a lot of good stuff. Thank you.
Good evening. Not a whole lot to add, as what Mr. Duckett said. Homecoming week. I do have a link there to our speaker tomorrow, just with his homepage, some more information. We're pretty excited about that. Comes with a very good message.
Watch some of the stuff on YouTube, it was really good.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. Testing wise, most of our local K-12 or pre-K-12 benchmark testing is just about finished. It should be done within the next week or two. Middle school interventions have started, our MTSS process has started. And like Mr. Duckett said, our, it's, it's been a great start. Staff and students, seems like a little bit different vibe going on in the building than we've had the last few years.
My apologies, I forgot to say one thing about Sarah anyway. I just really appreciate everything she does with student council and I forgot to mention that. And if it's right, it's right. Thank you, Ms. Carson.
Yes, we all learned you too, that's had a great start to the year. The staff have just been so positive, just, it's been great. We have wonderful new, great staff. We started out the year by finding out that we had received a reward for our PBIS. So we have continued to sustain it and to keep implementing it with a high rigor and we get received a December school award for 2023. They choose just a handful of schools and how many, how many of you was chosen as one of them? And again, that is because of all of our staff going from, all the way from the bus drivers because they work PBIS all the way to the kitchen staff, the office staff, cares and teachers. And so that was really nice for the staff to be recognized. Like Robbie said, we are finishing up our testing in the elementary and then we will be doing our data retreats and looking at data and trying to adjust our instruction accordingly. And also placing students in taking interventions, which are the different programs to meet their needs. Grade three is continuing to have Freddie the dog come in for to read with him. Freddie loves to listen to books. He is just so patient with those kids, they can lay on, they can do whatever they want as they read, but their fluency does increase. The third grade reading fluency scores have really gone up. She has lots of the half the volunteer, has lots of data to show for all the different schools she's been in and including ours. So we appreciate that she wanted to continue with coming to work with the collaborators. We're going to do our bus safety with the bus and do all those sessions this Wednesday that Holly and Jonathan have arranged for us. So we will be participating in that along with supporting the PBIS bus behaviors and expectations.
Thank you, Ms. Director.
Just starting out echoing what the three principals said about a great start to the school year at our fall workshop because we had so many new staff members. We really emphasize helping everybody out, making sure the new teachers, not just our mentor program, but everybody, making sure we help out our new staff. Find your way those first few weeks so that it's really emphasizing the great start that we've had, so. As far as enrollment, right now we're seeing kind of a slight increase in enrollment. When the numbers really set it down, like in October, we'll have those numbers. I discuss that topic and many other topics, the, the radio shows on our website. If you have 40 minutes of your time to really listen to everything that's going on in the school. I have a very good explanation of two documents that are embedded on the link on the radio. They talk about the issues of funding and equalization. Take a look at those documents and listen to the radio show, that's pretty good information. Take a look at that. Had many projects done over the summer. We just finally completed the play, preschool playground equipment. They sent it to us originally with no instructions. So we're waiting for the instructions to come. If you go up and look at it, it's a pretty, pretty big piece of equipment that we need instructions to do, but thankfully our custodians got it in. Preschool is very much appreciative of that and sandbox and it's just, it's become a very nice area for our preschool program. And that was paid for through our SIR funds. Finally, I just want to wish everyone a festive but safe homecoming week. I think it's just such a great opportunity for all of our communities within our district to come together and really take a lot of pride in all the events that are going on this weekend. Celebrating homecoming courts, just all the great things we have. We've got a lot of things in our school district as well, so hopefully we have a chance to do that this week.
Thank you. Any questions for any of the administrators? Moving on to item eight, non-action items. Students here, and basically the district is governed by a bunch of policies. And those policies need to be continually updated. First step is that once a policy is due to be updated, it comes to a policy review committee, which is three board members look it over. Oftentimes, the wording of the policy comes, it's something that's already exists. If there's modifications, some of those modifications will come about state or association that we belong to, school board association. And I think we have four policies today. They were brought up and first introduced at the last meeting. There's a, for a policy to become approved, it is presented to the board twice. And then on a third presentation, then there's a vote to approve it or not approve it. And over that intervening time, when it's brought up to the board, people can make changes or not make changes or think about it. I don't think there's any changes in any of these. First one is policy 102, equal education opportunity, second review. Questions or comments? Policy, or item B would be policy 514, bullying and bullying prohibition, second review.
No changes.
Questions or comments? Hearing none. Item C would be policy 613, graduation requirement, second review.
No changes on that one either.
Questions or comments? Item D would be policy 621, literacy and the Read Act, second review.
No changes.
Questions or comments? Item nine would be the consent agenda. Motion to approve the consent agenda?
Somewhere.
In a second.
Second.
I don't suppose we can reject the addendum?
I wouldn't recommend it. I wish we could, but I wouldn't recommend it.
Highlights?
A lot of hiring of faculty, staff for the musical and winter activities, which is always good to see those positions filled. With some leave patterns requested and we'll talk about what those are. And on the addendum, just hiring of apparel and resignation of the district office as well.
Best if we didn't express our gratitude, our gratitude and our fact of rulelessness.
Appreciate everything you've done.
Much appreciated.
Sure you won't? Just go be here for the October meeting. Another opportunity to take it.
Questions or comments on any of consent agenda issues? Hearing none, all in favor, I.
I.
All opposed, same side. Item 10 would be the treasurer's report. Motion to approve the treasurer's report.
Somewhere.
In a second. Highlights?
There's not really anything to note with finance, financials. Everything is going smoothly. They're pretty well to last year. I did just want to let you know that next week, Monday, starting on Monday, our auditors are coming, so the audit is beginning. They're hoping to be here two to three days on site, going through all of our paperwork and then everything else will be done. Hopefully we'll have it done. I don't anticipate it being done before I leave, but I'll be available to make sure everybody is, everything is taken care of and it gets wrapped up nicely.
Any questions here?
Stop begging.
Yeah.
Hearing none, all in favor of approving the treasurer's report, I.
I.
All opposed, same side. Item 11, action items. First would be donations and gifts. Motion to accept or approve the vote for the gifts as listed.
Somewhere.
In a second.
Second.
Got some meals, quite a few donations for charter buses. Charter buses are expensive. Supplying demand right now for those. Thanks donation of some stainless steel for our metal program. That's always good. stainless steel is expensive. You know, I don't, I don't know, they're not a local business. Might be completely as with the MMA.
The London?
Beyond expressing our appreciation, any questions or comments? Full call zone? Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Randy?
Yes.
Melissa?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion approved. And B, a motion to approve annual request for open campus.
I saw one.
In a second.
Second.
Mr. Duckett? I'm sure the seniors will appreciate the willing to go again. Last couple of years, number is actually, it's been pretty good overall. Seniors understand that they stay in town. A lot of times they go over to their parents' kids' house in town and parents can cook in, whatever the case. So it's just a good opportunity for them to, a little bit of a different feel for what is coming after high school. Next quarter. I'll hand out the forms if it's approved, probably tomorrow or later this week.
You only do the form once?
Just once, yep. If they forget, they just don't get to go the first time, can't do it.
Are those dates already set?
We've got them set. Local businesses, try to give them a heads up. They also give local media a heads up too. Just to let them know, there's a lot more traffic floating around. Not trying to beat you guys. I give them a little bit of a heads up. Sometimes they're waiting in the parking lot. It's been going pretty well. Questions or comments from Mr. Duckett? Hearing none, all in favor, I.
I.
All opposed, same side. Item C would be a motion to approve the German trip.
Somewhere.
In a second.
Second.
This is just the annual trip that Mr. Ring takes to Germany. He turned in the information, I communicated, communicated with the trip committee via email, just explained to them, gave some cost comparison. It's the same great trip that he takes every year. The trip committee was. They definitely didn't approve it, definitely.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, I.
I.
All opposed, same side. Similar issue, item D, a motion to approve the Washington DC trip. In a second.
Second.
Same trip he does every other year, that's why he'll go for 2025, but since the board approved it, since it's planned, it's replaceable soon. And following the board meeting, I do have some free finders of last time's trip, different pictures, but as I mentioned before, I, I've done these trips with students before and this great trip to go on Washington.
Actually, it went this past summer with Sam. It was a fantastic trip. It really was. We had to see it a lot. No way you could see DC like without having a coach bus waiting for you and dropping you off at the door every time. And they, it is, the organization uses, I forget the name now, but they did a very good job. They had a tour guide and then you have two people from the organization that go everywhere with you, but you have a whole group of guys. Yes, it was great. I was worried my young man would not like it because he doesn't like to walk, but we had a fantastic time. So then you know. It was, I don't want to go there, man, to walk. No, it was, it was really good. And it was hot and it was still really, very hot.
Yeah. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, I.
I.
All opposed, same side. Item E, a motion to approve principal's contract. Second.
Second.
Administration, administration negotiated committee met with them and people come to a tentative agreement that night with a couple of staff in force, but. with a couple of back and forths, but it's difficult to roll them out. Input from the people that were on the committee.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye? Aye. Aye. All opposed, same side. Moving on to item F. Motion to approve truth and taxation. First, a motion to approve setting a date for the truth and taxation hearing. Omo. In a second.
Second.
Subrating.
Yep, that will coincide with the December school board meeting, which we can have the truth and taxation meeting have, which is the same meeting we have every year.
Is it during the meeting or?
Yes, during the meeting. You used to not be able to do it during the meeting, have a separate, set a separate date. And probably about eight, nine years ago, they said you could do it during the meeting. Old schools do it during the meeting. Yes.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye? Aye. All opposed, same side. Item G, maximum levy certification for 2023, able 2024. Motion to approve the levy certification.
I still will.
In a second.
Second.
Annual resolution, if you recall, we have the board set the maximum allowable. However, it doesn't mean that you're going to spend it all. It just gives the district the latitude to go levy the maximum that possible. And they've been having some issues with this recently. You'll know, and I don't want to throw any other school that's going to bust those that did it early. You didn't get the right information out because they changed it. But just today, talking to Ms. Nasko, they got the information correct today. So there will just be a slight increase in the levy, what we have if we levy it to the max. It is always following the meeting. Ms. Nasko will be able to get the form to you and get that set in. So very slight increase this year in the levy.
Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye? Aye. All opposed, same side. Motion for a German. Omo. In a second, second. Questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor, aye? Aye. All opposed, same side.
I'll be sitting in the second.
Pace is up to the person. You got like. Damn straight.